All right, I will call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Canos.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Ms. McCready.
Here.
Mr. McQueen.
Yes, here.
Mr. O'Day is absent. Ms. Mara?
Here.
Okay, notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier News, and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 24th, 2020. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Do I pledge allegiance?
The United States of America. We're probably what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have a presentation from downtown Burnsville on the Main Street program that I know they have been working on for probably two years. Olivia carries this notebook with her that's about six inches thick. Do you have it there?
I do. Here it is.
Been diligently working her way through, so I will turn it over to you to explain it all to us.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Canos, ladies and gentlemen of the council, and of course, to the public that are here tonight. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak regarding the future of Burnsville with the Main Street program. In case you don't know, I am Olivia Manning, resident and business owner here in town. And I am the founder of Downtown Burnsville. We're an established 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And it's our mission to create and work exclusively on a long-term program that will help revitalize and grow Burnsville's commercial corridor for the benefit of all members of the community. So we're here in support with Board of Directors, some of whom are in attendance with us tonight. And as many of you recall, it's actually been since 2016, believe it or not. I've been personally on the hunt for a solution that other towns seem to have uncovered to revitalize their communities and truly make them thrive. So samples of these can include Somerville, Denville, and Metatchin. And those are just a few among 18 Main Street communities, among other communities, that have two common programs that stick out in our state and across the country. And those two programs are a business or a special improvement district and a Main Street community through the state and national level programs. So some towns have used each program individually, either an improvement district or Main Street, or many have adopted both programs with incredible success. So tonight, we're here to offer more information for and receive support from mayor and council in the form of a resolution to move forward with submitting our application to receive designation as a Main Street community through the state of New Jersey. So what does this mean? Now, before I introduce our very special guest, who is very gracious to join us tonight from the Main Street program, she'll be speaking a little bit more about the Main Street approach, the benefits of becoming a Main Street community, requirements and so forth. I just want to take a second and share with you some of the progress made in Metatchin specifically over just the last five years. And this does include 2020, which was a pandemic year. And I'm offering this to you before we dive into detail about the program, so you have a little bit more of a frame of reference as to some of the work a town can actually accomplish when the entire community is involved and are focused on more long-term goals towards the future. Anthony, am I able to share? I should be able to, yes?
Yes, yeah, you should be able to.
Okay, perfect. Let's do this here. And A. All right, so this is really a collaboration in a way with Main Street New Jersey and national level program. So, sorry, just a second here. Should I have myself set up properly? Okay. So similarly to the research that Downtown Burnsville did in 2018, Metatchin gathered data and input from the community to determine specific focused strategies for growth. And as in any well-executed plan, creating a strategy for moving forward is a strong element of Main Street's guiding principles. So for Metatchin specifically, it was a family-friendly strategy and innovation. And for us, when we did this in 2018, just to give you guys a frame of reference, we got feedback from the community and determined that arts, dining, and entertainment, and combined with family-friendly strategies were accurate plans for growth. So from Metatchin, they were kind enough to share some of their photos, their before and after photos of some projects they worked on in just the last five years to improve their town. They focused on updating storefronts and facades, and as you can see, I can press the right button here, even with just a simple can of paint, they were able to assist businesses to improve.
Olivia, your screens aren't changing. Are you sure you're sharing?
I am. Are we not changing?
No, we see the, like, downtown Burnsville and the Main Street.
You may need to shift to your PowerPoint presentation.
Oh. Oh, dear.
You might have two screens up if you're sharing.
Okay, so I'm using a different.
There you go.
Can you see this? All right, so we'll just do it this way.
That's fine, yep.
That'll do it. Thank you, guys. So again, as you can see with just a simple can of paint, whoops, you can see the facades are just simply changed from something very basic. Now, Metatchin was also able to help businesses with obtaining signage, and they did quite a few other projects as well. And as you can see here, this is clearly a redevelopment project that they were able to successfully complete. Creative placemaking projects also took a prominent focus on Metatchin's plans. So similarly to our own creative placemaking project, which is the Mount Area Road mural, there are community gathering and efforts that come together when creative placemaking projects occur. So this is one of them. This is just a basic, simple alleyway that they actually painted the floor to start. And then eventually, hopefully you can see in this one, a little bit on the left there, they have the mural on the side as well as the floor. And they referred to this as imagination alley, which then circles back to their family-friendly strategy, speaking towards growth and inspiration through the imagination. And as we all know, our children have quite a bit of imaginations as well, so it really tries to spark that interest. So Metatchin's Main Street organization, known as Downtown Metatchin, also had the ability to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'll just circle through a couple of these last ones here, so you can see some signage, just something basic, right? This is one of their storefronts that they just cleaned up in a restaurant as well. So they did, they were able to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic with crowdfunding and the purchase of over 1,600 meals from local restaurants that they then fed frontline workers with. Other towns are able to reallocate budgets from larger-scale events that were then canceled. And then instead, they purchased gift cards from their local businesses, and they gave those gift cards to the public for free. So while there are a great deal of things that Metatchin could do, like closing down a street for dining that Burnsville may not be able to do, being designated as a Main Street community opens doors to help our community survive through the pandemic and then thrive on the other side. So now I would love to turn this over to, and hopefully Kathy has a little bit better of screen-sharing capability than I am. I will turn this over to Kathy LaClant, the Senior Program Officer and Director of Coordinating Program Services with Main Street America. And she's here to speak a little more to the history of Main Street, how the program works, and the benefits that we will see over the long term.
Get up here.
Yep, there you are.
All right, awesome.
Ta-da. We're all getting to be experts at these Zoom meetings. Hello, everyone, and I hope you're having a good evening. That's the benefit of Zoom, right? It would have been an airplane trip for me to get to you otherwise, so I'm glad I'm able to speak to you via Zoom. I've been at the National Main Street Center for 14 years. Before that, I was the state coordinator for the New Hampshire Main Street program. And I started my Main Street career as a local executive director. So I've been doing this for over 30 years. My primary job now is really helping communities get started in Main Street, also statewide programs getting started. So I've worked in communities as small as 397 to as many as a half a million. So been through the whole gamut of Main Street communities out there. I just wanted to give you a little bit of history about our program. It started in 1980 as a program of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, which is located in Washington, DC. And it was really because so many communities back then had a lot of vacant buildings, because strip malls started opening, regional malls started opening, we started losing a lot of retail, and downtowns were really in a very sad state. But we really believe that everybody deserves a vibrant downtown. And so our program is really set up to help people identify great economic opportunities, featuring great places and spaces for people to enjoy. So really, it's our mission to help you be successful as a community in addressing downtown revitalization. So our program now, I should have changed that slide. Sorry, Olivia, I missed that. We're over 40 years old. We would have celebrated that last year if we'd had our conference to do so. But it's made up of all sizes of cities, as I said. And we really work together to help breed life into old places, because our downtowns are really probably the oldest places we have within our community. So a few things about Main Street, what I like to call the ground rules, is that Main Street is historic preservation, because we're saving the places that have made your community unique for probably more than 100, 150, maybe even 200 years, some of the buildings there. But Main Street is economic development. And we often talk about the Main Street program is an economic development program that uses historic preservation as its primary tool. Main Street is not a merchants' association. In fact, it drives overall community economic development. You know, many of those communities that she mentioned were, that Olivia mentioned, were communities that are strong, and they are because they've put their effort into Main Street. When I was a local executive director, and this was back in Chippewa Falls, Wisconsin, and if anybody knows Chippewa Falls, it's the home to Line &amp; Kugel beer and Cray Research. They made the fastest computers in the world, but a small town at 13,000 people. Three years into my program, I got a call from our local hospital and also from a vice president at Cray Research with basically the same message. They said, Kathy, when we were recruiting doctors or engineers to come and work for us, we would never bring them to downtown Chippewa Falls, because we thought if they saw how bad it was, they would choose to either not come and work for us or they'd come and work for us but live someplace else. But those calls they made to me, three years later, they said, the first place we bring them now is to downtown, because when they see the great local businesses, how vibrant it is, the great historic buildings, they'll choose to come and work for us and to live in our community. And another example was when we held our Christmas parade. And the first year we ran it in 1989, the police chiefs, I had to fill out the form, get my permit to have the parade. He said, how many people do you expect? And I'm like, I don't know. I've never done a Christmas parade. We've never had one. If 2,500 people came, I said, I would be happy. Well, 10,000 people came. Traffic jam. It was just, it was bad. It was bad. And the police chief was very mad at me, but I didn't know. I didn't know 10,000 people would come. But McDonald's, which was three miles out of town, called me and said, thank you. Please have that parade again. People had to wait 45 minutes to get a cup of coffee out there at McDonald's. And I thought, see, that's how economic development, when you're downtown, is healthy, when you're running those cool events downtown, that helps everybody. That's why we say it's not a merchants' association. It is not just for the benefit of the people who have businesses and property within the district. It raises the home value of the, you know, surrounding neighborhoods or everybody in the community, because it's a vibrant place and people want to be there. So it's only successful, though, if it's community-driven. You don't go looking for the big pie in the sky grant to say, gosh, if we just got that half a million dollar streetscape project, all would be well in downtown. Well, not if there are vacant storefronts or uncared-for buildings or you don't have the right mix of businesses. So Main Street, I'm going to talk about that in a second, is really a comprehensive program. And so Main Street is not to be seen as a project, because our program is 40 years old. There are 40-year-old Main Street programs, because as programs progress, you still have a lot of work that changes and continues to need to be done throughout the community. So this is what we call the Main Street four-point approach, that we have to have work being done under organization, design, economic vitality, and promotion at the same time. So organization is building that sense of community, excuse me, that you all develop your own vision of what you want your downtown to be, who it will serve, the business makeup, how you want to use it. And organization is all the resources. Where are you going to find the people, excuse me, and the money to get those things done? And it's about promoting your efforts, not promoting downtown, but just promoting to the community that they have an opportunity to get involved. And design is everything to do with, so I'm going to just take a quick drink of water, has everything to do with how downtown looks and feels, from the historic building facades to the storefront window displays to parking areas, public spaces, gateways to the downtown. Economic restructuring, that we now call economic vitality, is helping your existing businesses. What are the desired businesses that you want? And also working on housing options, because we know millennials and baby boomers are all looking for that cool, unique place to live where they don't have to necessarily have a car. They can walk to the coffee shop, walk to church, walk to the post office, et cetera. And promotion are all of the events and marketing we do to get more people using our district. Those special events are fun, because they usually bring people in from out of town, but it's also helping the businesses with online marketing, which so many of our Main Street programs were outstanding at providing during COVID, helping businesses get online, which we've been telling them to do for years, but COVID really helped push that. But just getting more people in the district. So kind of to go over some bullet points. We think Main Street programs are grassroots and community-driven. It's not a top-down approach. It really is getting the citizen re-involved. It's funded locally, and that's when it's successful, not waiting for a grant coming from the outside. But that people are investing in their downtown. I love it when Main Street programs are C3 organization, tax-exempt, because it shows that people have that chance to invest in their own community. We work with communities on setting up and guiding their goals. And Main Street New Jersey is well-established for doing that for their communities. Main Street builds leaders. Every year, I made sure my board chair turned over, because if somebody stayed there too long, nobody else wanted to follow them, because they thought being the board chair might be a lifetime commitment. So we just, every year, got a new board chair. Everybody in the community learned to take their turn, being in that leadership position. And then, you know, just, you know, they're passionate people, people who believe in downtown. And sometimes it starts with a small group, and then it grows out from there. And I can tell you, when I was in Chippewa Falls, I never had, I never heard for volunteers or money, because we engaged them all along the way to get involved. It's also about building on your unique assets. You know, you don't have to become a fake Bavarian town. It's really building on what the assets are in your own community and building on that, taking advantage of that. What's authentic in your community? I heard arts, dining, you know, what would be some things that you can build on off of assets like that? So could be your buildings, could be your history, could be your geographic location. But that's what we work with communities on building. And often, that greatest asset is your historic building stock. And so that's why preservation is such a key part of Main Street. That's what really makes almost every one of our downtowns most unique, is how do we help those property owners rehab, make them fully utilized on all stories, et cetera. And really, you know, other programs that do work on economic development are often, you know, single things, like placemaking, sustainability, or entrepreneurship. But Main Street encompasses all of those things. We set strategies based on your assets. And how do we get that work done under the four points? Because it isn't just a, you know, a lot of communities early on came to us because, you know, they had that one, like, historic theater. And they said, gosh, if we could just rehab that historic theater, everything would be well in downtown. But around you are still vacant storefronts, so it has to be much more comprehensive. And that's why for 40 years, our program has continued to work. So since the 80s, we tested out the program for three years, but we're almost over 2,500 communities now that have used the Main Street approach. This is a framework and a roadmap, and it's not prescriptive. It works a little bit differently in every community. Every community's needs and assets are different. And many different kinds of organizations, so it's real flexible for communities. But Main Street really helps communities get started with that revitalization kickstart that they need. It isn't a quick fix. And we really, you know, work with communities on what their needs are to provide those services. So dollar for dollar, we say the Main Street program has proven to be the most successful cost-effective revitalization program anywhere. And we have the stats, actually, to back a lot of that up. And there have been a lot of surveys done, studies done with statewide programs as well. But on average, across the country, for every $1 that a city invests in its Main Street program, there's a return on that investment of almost $32 from the private sector. Now, that's a fabulous return on investment, right? It's sort of like many of our Main Street programs have facade grant programs. And I worked in Tennessee in Smithville, Tennessee. They offered up, it was only, I think it was $15,000 that went towards facade grants. And each building owner only got $500 once they divvied up all the money. And I was there the day that they gave the check back to these property owners. That $15,000 invested leveraged over a quarter of a million dollars of improvements in one summer. Now, that is a great investment. Then that helps raise the tax base. And so dollar for dollar, that's what's happening. It's always about setting the tone for what is happening in downtown. So by having a Main Street program, people go, wow, there's this organization here that's working on behalf of me every day to make my community better, to help my business be better. You know, that is really an important thing. So every year, communities in our program send us their reinvestment stats, net gain in new jobs, new businesses, reinvestment by the public sector, by the private sector, housing units added, volunteer hours that have been donated. And it's all been phenomenal what happens in Main Street communities. And we also note that, and especially during COVID, first it was the recession, but we looked at retail sales drops during the recession. And in Main Street communities, some of them were actually having gains, but Main Street ended up at a plus 0.1% retail gains when other communities were dropping anywhere from 3% to 10%. And during COVID, it's so interesting that I'm getting so many reports of places where even restaurants are opening in downtown districts under COVID restrictions. So we're seeing a lot of business gains, because people are, you know, getting back to the roots of their community, shopping local. Sales tax revenues are going up in almost every city that I've talked to, because while people are shopping maybe a bit more online, they're also not leaving town to go to the big city to do their other shopping. So by any metric, this is, you know, a great effective framework. It's worked in just so many other places. We want to help communities create places that their grandkids want to come back to, create multi-generational communities. And it really is about public life and those third spaces that people meet at. But some communities have some negative forces that they have to contend with, and Main Street is really good at that as well. But it's really the opportunity to create more public wealth in your community. We don't longer talk about business recruitment in the sense that we used to, is more of developing entrepreneurs even within our own communities. Here we go. Broad sources, Main Street provides what we do at the national level. We provide a lot of resources, educational, expertise, training, discounts. I think one of the best things people like about our national conferences, the networking opportunities. This year, our conference is going to be virtual, but we're still setting up some networking opportunities for people. But somewhere out there, someone has already done what you're going to try to do. And so that network is so good, because everybody shares their successes and the mistakes that they've made, so you can always learn from somebody else. So being part of that network and Main Street America, you get to use our brand if chosen to be a Main Street New Jersey community. So the logo you see at the bottom can be used to show that Main Street isn't just this local program, it's part of a statewide program, and it's part of a national program. Just last year, we gave out over $2 million in grants. Now, I want to remind you that I said your program is locally, is going to be successful if it's locally funded. That's for operations in your projects. Our grants have always been for very specific things, like, well, we did a lot with the heartbeat grants that went right straight to businesses. We're doing organizational grants to people who did cool things during COVID. We partner with American Express on different grant programs. So we've returned more money than ever in 2020 to our Main Street communities. And then also, you know, Main Street programs really relieve the burden of local government, because we're an economic development organization and working on filling those vacancies, making your businesses stronger, working every day to create new businesses, new job gains, investment by the private sector. It really does bring about substantial change in downtown with raising the tax base, you know, the property tax base, the sales tax base, et cetera. And also, you know, just that it helps leverage sometimes what the government is doing. For example, if you were doing any kind of street improvements, like light poles and benches, Main Street programs are often partners in finding private funding to help come and provide some financial assistance for that as well. And then we have eight guiding principles within Main Street, which we want communities to know, that Main Street is comprehensive. Don't come into this if you just want to do a streetscape. It works because we work on all four points. Also have an understanding that it's incremental. Our program's 40 years old. People have been making improvements and changes all through there. So if, and I don't know this as a fact, but if you had a 50% vacancy rate right now, it's not going to be fixed by next year. So incremental is a key word. I've mentioned community-driven several times. It will work only because the private and public sector come together. And it really is key on making sure that those partnerships are in place, building on your existing assets. And then what you do is done with quality, and it's also change-oriented. Actually, to be a nationally accredited Main Street community, you must have a work plan. And Main Street New Jersey will be the one checking in on that to make sure you're adhering to your work plan. So if we have projects, what are the steps we're going to take to get there? So change happens, and it's all about implementation. So Main Street doesn't just, you know, we write a business plan for ourselves, and we get that work done. So those are the principles we guide communities on. And this is sort of our, five years ago, we went through what we call the Main Street refresh and really helping communities identify what they want to work on. So community vision and engagement is the first thing. Then we have to have an understanding of what's potential in your market by doing some market analysis light. And then we help communities identify what those overarching, what we call transformation strategies are. So if you're an arts district, then what will we do under the four points of Main Street to implement that? And then making sure we have those measurements in place, because if you invest in a Main Street program, you're going to want to make sure you're getting your return on your investment. So having you involved at the beginning to say, what's important to do in our downtown, is key, because then we get the measured outcomes at the end. And I'll end with just this quote from the president of our Board of Directors, Ed McMahon. He says, "People stay longer and spend more money in places that attract our affection, but no place in America will stay special by accident." And that's the whole premise of the Main Street program. Change will happen. It will either happen to you, or you can guide it. And that is really the whole explanation of why many communities get into Main Street is because a lot weren't happy with the change that was happening. I was in a community in I was in a community in South Carolina that had fourteen payday loan stores in their downtown, and they said, "Help!" And I'm like, "How did you allow that to happen?" That was a tough one to overcome that, but that's how bad their downtown was, it was becoming known as a payday loan community. So with that, that's all I had. I'll stop sharing my screen and let faces come back up. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the program.
Before, if you don't mind, before we jump into a couple of questions, I just wanted to take one more minute just to address the resolution briefly and the appropriation that we're requesting from the borough as well. So the funds that we are requesting is a part of the commitment of the borough to join us as one member of the community. I'm calling all of you as a whole here, but as a part of the community that we are gathering to move forward on this grassroots campaign, if you will. And, you know, expanding the financial backing towards Main Street designation, obviously, you know, is part of it. So in the emails, I sent Anthony an email and an attachment. We did include our high-level work plan that Kathy was just mentioning that we'll be working on in a little bit more detail, but ultimately, we'll be submitting that with the application. And it will be available as well on downtownbernsville.com for the public to review. But some items in the plan include projects and programs that do require funding. And in addition to the borough's contribution, we will be releasing an annual appeal letter to the community. For each project, we are also, and events, we're seeking sponsorships, which we've done already in the past, and we're doing that right now with the mural project. And then, of course, the mural project has some very lucrative promotional opportunities for sponsors. So we do hope that those sponsorships are going to be a popular portion of the funding that we are going to be working on moving forward. And then, of course, once the tight grip of that pandemic loosens a little bit, we will be moving forward with the Business Improvement District program that will help provide a stronger, consistent funding mechanism for the organization as well. So upon designation with Main Street, if we're fortunate enough to receive it, we will have the opportunity to apply for grants, as Kathy mentioned. We would otherwise not have the opportunity to receive these grants if we didn't achieve any kind of regular designation. So it is something that we are working towards, and ultimately, we would be able to turn this funding around and give it directly to the businesses in some capacity, or work towards another kind of project that we have listed in the work plan. So therefore, the funding from the borough could be heavily put towards activities in the plan, and it'll be very crucial for the community to learn more about Main Street, have opportunities to join in the work that we're conducting, and begin to actually execute these projects. And the funding from the borough would absolutely tremendously help us take this first step, so.
Are those appropriations, Olivia?
I'm sorry?
It's twelve thousand.
It's twelve thousand. Twelve thousand.
I do have a question about that, because it says, it's the twelve thousand, which it sounds reasonable, but it says the intent to appropriate annually. So is that twelve thousand every year indefinitely, or is it going to escalate? What's the plan on that?
The plan would be to escalate depending on the nature of the environment that we're in. You know, if it's still a pandemic environment, you know, we would visit that year after year. Each year, we would be creating an annual report as well to provide you with the information on what we've been doing so far and be working together along the way. So the intent is to come back to you with the same amount every year, and then depending on the environment we're around, we would be either increasing that number or keeping it as is.
Olivia, I thought it was a three-year commitment?
It is, but I was told that we are not allowed to commit to three years?
No, but I mean, that was what, it would only be for three years, and then hopefully, at that point, you have other sources of funding, that it's really more like a seed money. It's not. Kathy's shaking her head, no.
No, Kathy, I'll let you. I'll let yours hold that one.
And as Olivia said, you know, at some point, you know, think of this as your economic development program for the city. The need for the public partner, private partnership never goes away. It's a fairly small investment for what you're going to get out of it. And it was funny, because the first time I went to my city council, who thought, like you did, after three years, you know, maybe we would find money elsewhere. The biggest benefactor of a Main Street program is the municipality itself. You gain in jobs and tax base and sales tax revenues. You know, you're the biggest benefactor, and often, the municipality is the largest contributor to the program. So when I went to my city council for the first time, there were some people who thought we were going to say how we found some money elsewhere magically. And I said, "No, you know, we came to the end of our first three years of pledges, and our plan was to go ask everybody for a fifteen percent increase." And, you know, and I said, "And I'm coming to you to ask for the same thing. How can I ask my private donors if the city's not also giving them?" Because as a program, after three years, your salary increases, your expense to do more projects increases. Now you're gaining the maturity of being able to really work on development projects and business development. So the need for funding will increase over time. And so, you know, I went to my city council, and our city council president said, "Kathy, if we give you the fifteen percent increase, do you promise not to come back for three years?" And I said, "I promise I won't be back for three years, but when I come back, I'll ask for an increase again." And ever since then, their funding has remained, you know, so don't be, while the application is looking for you to make a three-year commitment, it's not the minimum. We're hoping that you understand this is an ongoing program. And I think you're going to be needed at the table going forward.
You mentioned, sorry, go ahead.
No, so how does the money get allocated? Where does it flow? I mean, is it all recycled back into the borough, and who administers it?
Kathy, if I may, it would be managed by Downtown Berneville. We would be, as the Main Street designated community, we would be using that funding for specific activities, whether that's a promotional campaign or putting a wayfinding signage up, you know, whatever ends up being the solution with the budget that's proposed. We would be managing the efforts and the funding. And then again, we would be returning to you with the information on a, like an annual report, or if the report would be quarterly, you know, that's something that we can discuss further as to what you guys would prefer. But it is an ongoing, open communication that we would have on where the funding goes. As a C-three organization, we do publicly provide our annual spending. So it's already something that's on the table for everyone to see.
Kathy, in your experience, are these programs more successful as community-led organizations? When I say community, I mean resident-led organizations, or is it more successful if they're led in partnership with the various businesses involved?
Well, by community-led, that's everybody, not just the residents. It's the residents working with the business. Yeah, hand in hand. So versus a merchant association where they have memberships, like a 501(c)(6), like a Chamber of Commerce. A Chamber of Commerce is a membership-based organization and serves its members. So if I went to a Chamber of Commerce and said, "Give me a great restaurant to eat at," they won't give me anybody but who is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Main Street is all-inclusive. And as a 501(c)(3), you're working in the community in the best interest of the community, not any individual business. So that community-led means everybody in the community.
So, you know, I've had discussions with residents about organizations. You know, an example would be one of, like Martha's Vineyard, where there's five or three C's communities that help to support their downtown that seem to be detached from the business communities. And I'm wondering, so one of the issues that we have in our communities, we have a tremendous amount of fractionation between our merchant organizations. And I'm trying to find out the right structure for long-term success.
Yeah, no, I don't know the history there. I can tell you that, like, when I came into Chippewa Falls, it was our chamber that was kind of running the retail kind of side of things. And we just, we worked it out as we went along. We had meetings, and we made sure everybody was clear about what everybody's mission was and promoted that. But I've also worked in communities where there's been three organizations, and they want, you know, to apply for Main Street. And I come in and I say, "If this is our goal, you know, let's get down to one organization that is conducting things." And I think that's, you know, if that's a service you need, that's something Main Street New Jersey can also assist with. But in one instance, I went in and we reformed and did a whole new board. We took three people from each of the existing organizations and added one more. So nobody had any, you know, primary authority on the newly organized organization. So if they don't have a clear mission, then, you know, it becomes problematic. If they have similar missions, they should join. But, you know, I've been places where there's been a merchants' association, and they've just become part of the promotion committee, because mainly, as merchants, they're more, most interested in getting people in their businesses and having those events. They're not so interested in going to work with the developer in the next town to get them to come and look at property in your town, or they're not as interested in sort of the preservation aspect. So I'd push, you know, you just have to understand what everybody's doing and then find their appropriate role in the organization. But I think the benefits of being part of the Main Street New Jersey program are pretty significant with the technical assistance and services you'll get from them, helping you figure out those things and encouraging you, you know, throughout the years that you're in the program.
Can you give us an example or some examples of the technical assistance?
Yeah, I know Sean is on the line as well from Main Street, New Jersey. But I did the application. Sean, do you want to speak up here for the TA that's available? Nope, he's back on mute. Okay, so it can be, gosh, anything, really. Every community gets a technical assistance visit. It could be developing those transformation strategies, vision planning, board development, volunteer development, fundraising for your organization, developing a fundraising plan. Could be entrepreneurial ecosystems, could be small-scale development, could be parking strategies for small towns, could be developing a brand, could be customer service training for your organization, could be, you know, anything as simple as developing gateway signage or wayfinding signage for your community. You know, somebody today just asked me for a list of things that people could ask for. And I said, "Well, sometimes I hate to offer a list, because you might just go, 'Ooh, a parking study sounds good,'" when I really would rather just say, "What do you need help with? What do you think is the biggest problem that, you know, Main Street, New Jersey could help you with?" And they'll be able to find or provide that technical assistance to you. Also, work plan development. I know Olivia's done a great job on developing a work plan there, but other communities haven't had that ability. We do new training for executive directors. We do board trainings, roles and responsibilities. Even communities that need help with filling out a 501(c)(3) application, those are all examples of tech visits that I've been part of or provided to communities. There's probably a hundred more.
I do have a question about, because I'm concerned about the language that almost sounds like we're committing the borough to an escalating cost every three years in perpetuity. What happens if ten, twelve years from now, our downtown revitalization is done, the Audi dealership site is done, we're well on our way to our affordable housing commitments being done, and we decide we don't need to do this any longer? What happens then?
Well, you can always choose to shut. Oh, go ahead, Sean. Are you on?
Yeah, I'm on. So a quick question. Are you thinking about creating an improvement district?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if you're going to create an improvement district, that's basically a downtown management corporation that's going to be allocated or appropriated on an annual basis, you know, monies to actually carry out some of the activities that are articulated in accordance that will be adopted by you all.
And Jeff, I will say, you know, further to your point, you know, this is not, and Kathy mentioned this at one point too in the presentation, this is not a, okay, it's been ten years, we're done, program. She did mention that there are some towns throughout the country that have been doing this since the inception of the program forty years ago. So this is not a, okay, well, all our development projects are done, so we don't need Main Street anymore. Once the development projects are done, they're going to need to be filled too. And the environment that we will be in in ten years from now, I mean, look at where we are now. Nobody ever thought we'd be in a pandemic, right? So we had to come up with new ways to do business. We had to change the way we lived our lives completely unexpected. So ten years from now, maybe the Main Street program will save us, right? Like it did for a lot of other towns during the pandemic. So it's not really one of those things where we look at it and say, "Oh, it's ten years and we're done." Or it's just going to be an escalating amount that we're going to ask. You know, Sean had a really great point. Once we put together the improvement district aspect, both programs can hand in hand, so that there's a solid funding mechanism. And perhaps the town doesn't need to provide funding, you know? Perhaps that's part of the conversation that we do have over ten years. There's no guarantee. There's no requirement. It's requested. It is certainly suggested by the folks over at Main Street America and New Jersey. But it is not something that I, you know, I'm happy to change it according to make sure that it's clear, that it's not an escalating requirement. But it is, you know, requested to show commitment and the partnership that we would have to be able to follow through the program.
And I think that's good, and thank you for that explanation, because my concern is just that I, you know, I don't feel in good conscience I can commit the borough to an indefinite, you know, item budget line, not just for Main Street, the same would hold true for the library or any other, either the recreation department or anybody else. You know, everybody has budgets, and those will be fluctuating up and down. But what I had heard was, "We're going to come back in three years and ask you for fifteen percent more." And oh, by the way, is it going to go on forever? So that, I would have a hard time swallowing.
It might happen anyway. The ask can always be made, but it's going to be because they're going to prove to you that your investment is paying off.
So Olivia, can I ask some organizational questions? So I really like this whole concept that Kathy was proposing about, you know, number one, community involvement. I agree that we need it. I'll start by saying, you know, thank you, because you put in tireless hours to getting this to where it is, right?
Yeah, I haven't counted them, but yes.
No, I know you haven't counted them, and I sort of, I thank you for that, because I know you've spent a lot of them. I like this idea about this being a community-owned program for the benefit of our downtown. Because, look, maybe I'm being naive. I think our communities wanted to get involved. They don't know how. You know, from an organizational perspective, are you okay with having a board of directors for this? You know, that had maybe a chairperson that would be a member of our community that would rotate every year? I know that you personally, I believe, that don't want to have to run this forever. You know, talk to me about how this would be organized, how this would, you know, twelve thousand dollars is really a whole lot. So how would this work? How would you involve the community, and how would you get this started?
Well, honestly, we kind of already have started. The fact that we are already an established C-three is already a grueling process, so we're done with that part. So I would like to say that we've already started. We've slowly been gathering a board of directors that are coming from all walks of life in town, business owners, residents. Our lovely mayor is on our board as well, thankfully, which has been wonderful. So, you know, we're slowly trying to ask folks to join in, and we're trying to be mindful that everyone is very busy, and it's difficult to get folks to volunteer. So we had community meetings before the pandemic for part of that reason. And that, one of those community meetings is where I introduced this program and started talking about it and said, "If you want this to change, then you need to jump on board, and community, you need to be part of it." And because of the pandemic, we canceled them, but on March third, we have our first post-pandemic, I'm going to call it, community meeting that we're going to hold virtually. And this is another way for us to be able to engage the community as much as possible, tell them about the program, offer them an opportunity to participate, and go from there. And the more we can promote the organization, which is part of Main Street's principles anyways, to promote the organization, the more we can share, and the more I can tell people, then I hope that they'll And the more I can tell people than hope that they'll tell more people and tell your neighbors and tell your friends and really try to engage as much as possible. So it's really about the people and getting folks to say, yes, I want to help. Yes, I want to be a part of this because it has been, well, let, let the town take care of it or somebody else should be taking care of it, not knowing what to do. Well, here is what to do. You can go to our website and you can complete the volunteer form. And you can say, I want to be part of the board of directors. I want to be part of the design committee. I want to be part of promotion committee, whatever it is. And we go from there. Right now.
And how do those towns get selected?
Can I just interrupt for a second? I think part of it too is that at some point you, you hire a professional.
Yes.
A downtown manager that the board, that then reports to the board. Or, or so the board or the volunteers, but you really need that paid professional. And that's part of what this money goes to.
Do they report to the board or to the council or to the borough administrator?
No, it's the 501(c)(3).
Right, we would, the, the c3 would be responsible for hiring the professional. They would be part-time or full-time as determined as appropriate with the, the work plan that we would put together. And, you know, they would report to us. And then eventually that report could be either sent to council or, you know, we can determine how we would be communicating moving forward. But ultimately.
One of the things that I'm very reluctant to do, I know there's a lot of different funding mechanisms that have floated around. I would like this to be community funded and borough funded, not tax funded for the local businesses right now. You know, right now, that's the last thing that they need, in my opinion.
Right, which is why we're not doing the special improvement district now. As we see the light at the end of the tunnel with the pandemic and things seem to start to improve, that, that will be the more appropriate time. We can certainly get a special improvement district prepared and set up, but not actually go in that direction yet. That's why this program is a much more appropriate means to start, specifically with designation so that we can be established. We can have the backing of the national and state level programs as well.
So what I heard.
Appropriations, just for a second. As Olivia mentioned earlier, it can only appropriate for one year. You can enter into a, a one-year contract with the 501(c)(3) and it can have either one, two-year option or two one-year options for a total of three years. But each of the succeeding years have to have an annual cancellation clause. Because you really can't bind future councils. So if there's not money in the budget in those future years, that would terminate the contract.
John, a question. Just from a purchasing law perspective, would this be sort of like a contractual program where activities and things are itemized and the town buy essentially pays for those specific services?
I, I, I would think.
Rather than a donation?
Yes, I, I would prefer we set it up that way unless somebody has a better idea. That we entered, I don't think it would have to be on a line item basis. I think we could enter into a contract with Main Street to run the downtown program at an annual cost of $12,000. But as I said, if it's a one-year contract with two one-year options, each of those options would have to have an annual cancellation clause saying if the money's not in the budget, that, that ends the contract.
So Olivia, hi, I'm Tom, by the way.
Hi, Tom. Nice to meet you.
And for council, we're very, towns are excessively restricted in donations that they can make, like rescue squads and things like that. So that's why we're talking, okay, we'd have to boil this down to like some broad deliverables if council wanted to go down this road.
Okay, okay, I, that's, I, I respect, you know, whatever is appropriate. I would be interested to see what other towns perhaps, how, how they are set up in the state. And I have some contacts of individuals I can reach out to to provide some of that information for us if that's helpful as well.
I will reach out to you. We'll schedule some time to talk.
All right, Tom.
I'd just like to comment overall on the presentation. I thought it was impressive. It sounds like it's an organization that has tremendous amount of experience and knowledge, some knowledge which we can benefit from. I think the return on investment examples about, you know, small seed money from the borough driving a lot, you know, multiple of money coming from private investment is an encouraging idea. And I think that, you know, we should consider that. I think the, we have in future years, as Jack Pigeon's just illustrated, the ability to reevaluate if we feel that we're not getting the value for money. And I think that the, the proposal that I heard from Kathy was that, you know, that we're not going to have a problem with that because they have a proven track record. And she's confident that we can stand on examples of where we've gotten good value for the money that we are investing. I also think that Councilman McQueen's point was good that, you know, we want to make sure we're coordinating activities. But I like the idea of, of an organization that is not driven by one segment of our residents, but by the community as a whole. So I think that, you know, this might be the right vehicle for that. And if we can manage it appropriately and, and try and coordinate other activities with the other groups, you know, either with or alongside of what the Main Street's doing. I think this, this is a small fraction, well less than 0.1%, well below 0.1% of our budget. And when I talk to people in the community, this is the number one area that they want us to work on, downtown development. And I think, you know, this goes hand in hand with trying to get the redevelopment areas invested in. This is more looking at, you know, how do we fill the spaces? How do we make most of the people who are already running businesses in our town? And how do we make it better for everybody? So unbalanced, I think it's the right thing to do. And I, I think we should move ahead with it. We certainly have the ability to reevaluate annually along the way if we feel it's not working for us.
Great, Tom.
Um, so at this point, Jack, I know we have a sample resolution. Do you want to take more time to go through it? And we can do it at the next meeting or do you think it's ready for tonight?
The only thing I don't have in there is the annual cancellation clause. In order, not the annual appropriation of $12,000. In order to do that, we needed a certification of the global funds. I guess that we do it next meeting if that's okay.
Yeah, because when, when is the application due?
March 31st.
So we do, yeah, we have the meeting in between.
Really, and I had to be complete.
Could we approve this tonight with the, with the understanding that there will be a cancellation clause added?
Well, no, but we need the certification of funds from the CFO before we.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think if we do it for the March 8th, I think, is it? Not 9th, whatever. That meeting should be enough time for you and it gives us enough time to get the language right and everything.
Yeah, I think the consensus tonight is to approve.
Yeah.
I have one more question if, if I could.
Of course.
And Olivia, look, this is an uncomfortable question. So we, we've had an unfortunate history in this town with a lot of division amongst various groups. So, so Mary, if, if this application is filled into downtown Burnsville, and again, I'm thankful because Olivia's taken this by, bow by the horns, right? Is the town locked into that organization forever? Or is the Main Street Association tied to our town itself?
From my understanding, since we are submitting the application, we are therefore responsible for maintaining designation. We do have to submit information, specifically data that would demonstrate growth and other pieces of information to the program as well, to New Jersey, to show that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. And then that way we can maintain designation status. There would be a point if we do not do what we're supposed to do that we lose that and therefore lose the benefits that we are hearing tonight that we would be receiving. So it, just like, I'm going to say, it's, it's like running a business, right? You, you're not going to give all of this stuff to Amazon and think that UPS is going to start taking over shipping things all over the country for them, right? It's really the other way around. Amazon's starting to take over from UPS, right? Not to say that they're turning it to Amazon, don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that, you know, the consistency element is part of what we've been lacking over all of these years. Sometimes we have events, sometimes we don't. This organization does it, no, this organization's doing it. Or somebody else in charge, somebody else is starting something new, whatever it is. The inconsistencies have been the challenge up until this point. So maintaining the consistency is really something that should be considered and processed over the long term. I do not need to be the person running it. Plain and simple. I'm not looking for spotlight, this has nothing to do with me. This is downtown Burnsville, this is not Olivia's organization. So if somebody else is running it, like Kathy mentioned too, there's a new person every year, a new chairperson, what have you. You know, that, that can be part of our program moving forward is that there's always somebody leading the organization on the board. The person that's hired to actually run the organization. There are people who do this for their career. They're in towns for 20 years. I spoke with a woman from Somerville who ran their improvement district for 20 years and now she's with another organization doing districts for other people. So people do this for a long time because they have it as a passion project. It's something that they commit to because they love it, not for any other reason.
So Olivia, I hope my question doesn't, because look, I, I'm very thankful, like I said, for what you're doing. But I wonder if a non-business owner in town running it would be the right choice.
What, what do you mean, like hiring somebody different or what do you?
Well, no, so, so, I mean, look, you've been the champion of this. And I'm thankful, like I said, I think it's a wonderful thing. But as we go forward, I really like this concept of having a different chairman or board of directors on a yearly basis that comes from the community. And the community supporting our businesses in a way that's altruistic in the, in the, in the best interest, you know what I mean? I like that concept and I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful we can get there.
It's certainly, it's certainly a topic we can discuss. Again, consistency is key, not that it needs to be me, but make, make sure that we put the processes together to execute a comfortable transition every year of new people so that the, the programs can still be completed. You don't want to start a project with one person and then switch hands. So like, it's, it's just a question of logistics making it work. But making sure that it's consistent is, is the only thing that is my concern.
So Olivia and Kathy, I have a question, just clarify. Do we have a organization that's called Main Street Burnsville? Or we're saying that downtown Burnsville organization is Main Street certified?
Yes, that would be correct. Downtown Burnsville is a Main Street designated community. And from my understanding, Kathy could speak to that.
Yeah, that, that's correct. We actually own the trademark to the name Main Street America. And so communities can't just call themselves Main Street without being accepted into the program. So Olivia got that right.
Okay, so then, but Olivia, downtown Burnsville is not a business organization. Based organization. You, you happen to be part of it and you are a business owner, but there's non-business owners that are part of downtown Burnsville and there's other business owners who are part of downtown Burnsville. Am I correct?
Yes, we do have, we do have residents that are, that are on the board. In, in truth, I, I don't, I don't have to be the business owner in town. If I were to walk away from our business tomorrow, I would not be a business owner in town. Not that that would happen. I know my husband's on the call, sorry. You know, it's, it's really, at the end of the day, it's, it's, it has nothing to do with, for me, it has nothing to do with the business. It, it has everything to do with, with this town. And, and the fact that I am also a resident and my two boys are going to be entering the school system in a few years. And hopefully next year I'll be able to enroll my son in, in Little League and, and other sports and stuff because he'll be four. So, you know, like this is, this is nothing to do with business. This is everything to do with just passion. If, if this is about me running this organization and there's concern on all of that front, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to consider taking an alternative role if that is a big part of, of this conversation and it's a major concern. And I'm happy to discuss further various options to make this succeed. I, I know that other, other organizations, having the same people running them for many, many years and not really seeing any change has been a concern in the past. And I certainly want nothing to do with that kind of organization moving forward. So, you know, happy to discuss this concept further and, and figure out the best solution for everyone. It is certainly my passion project, but, you know, I'm, I'm okay with making sure that it's at least seen through. I would hate to see it just fizzle out because it's just not organized properly. So that's, that's where I am.
I think there's, there needs to be a balance from all of us between, you know, consistency, competence, commitment and, you know, just rotating people for the sake of rotating folks. You know, I don't know what Kathy's experience is, but I mean, we change people every single year. You know, do, do we run out of talent pool after a certain period of time?
You, you don't want to change your director of the program that often. What changes is the board leadership and, and that's real key. So if I came into a community and the same board members were still there 10 years later, that is not a healthy sign for an organization. But it can be detrimental if your director, your executive director position turns over. There's a lot of losses you experience if that position isn't consistent because they develop relationships in the community. They know how all the sort of ongoing projects have always happened. They know their funders, they know their, you know, council members. They know, you know, all the details and the history of the organization. So we found that actually, programs that have a high turnover in the staff position suffer from it and, and, and sort of take a step, two steps back sometimes just trying to get that person re-indoctrinated. But new ideas, as, as Olivia said, we have some directors that are, have been on staff 35 years, same community.
Question, Kathy? The, the director that you're referring to, when you say director, you're talking about the person who's not necessarily a community member, but hired by the board to do the work?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Who you would consider to be your staff member?
Right, right. Yeah, it doesn't make sense to change that person every year.
Right, right.
Got it, okay.
And most boards, most boards, it's a three-year term and then you have the option to renew another three years and you stagger them so that there's three, if there's nine, there's three who are up for renewal or replacement every three years. And that keeps that fresh cycle of, of people coming in.
Kathy, how is a national organization funded?
We are a 501(c)(3) organization as well. We have membership dues with all of our communities. But primarily we have, we also have some great corporate partners like American Express, The Hartford, we're applying for grants everywhere. We can apply for grants, but we also have.
What would Burnsville's dues, dues be?
What would what?
Burnsville's dues.
Your dues would be, I think, $350, $395. You're asking me a tough question, I should know.
We funded that, we, we are, of course, I've had membership the last two or three years already. So we, I, I believe it's, I want to say it's 275, maybe it's 325, somewhere around there.
You're at the general member level. Once you become, yeah, once you become a designated Main Street community, if you are accepted by Main Street, New Jersey, then it goes up to $350 because there are some benefits to people that are in, you know, working towards our national accreditation. But we also set up some of our awards programs that are only available to nationally accredited communities. So there's a higher due structure once you become a designated community.
So we kind of want to talk about the benefits, which I, I think are clear. What are the restrictions that come along with it? You mentioned historic preservation, which I, I think in our town, we have a vested interest in making sure we maintain the historical character of our town. But, so what are the restrictions and the constraints that would come with such a designation that would have to be considered of?
Yeah, there, there's really no restrictions. It's just, as Olivia said, if you're not meeting the standards that, that Main Street, New Jersey lays out, which are basically send in your statistics every year, maintain that staff person, have an adequate operating budget, make sure you're participating in the, there's a require, that, there are 10 standards we use at national and Main Street, New Jersey has aligned their requirements with that, which is show us you still have broad-based support, you have a work plan, you have the director, you commit to ongoing training for staff and volunteers. So just like we're meeting, we do a lot of training virtually. So it makes it pretty easy, but you need to make sure you have money in your budget for professional development for your staff person, but also to maybe send people to our national conferences as well. That preservation ethic is that we really look to see that, not that Main Street, you know, could save a building that might be torn down for some reason, but hopefully they put up an effort to try and find a different solution versus tearing down. But it really is to promote preservation and teach property owners about. Uh, but it really is to promote preservation and teach property owners about, uh, the proper way to care for buildings, maybe set up facade grant programs. You have to be a member of the National Main Street Center and I think those are the 10 criteria. So that's what is the expectation.
Can I ask, does this follow up on that question? And, and let me, let me preface it by saying I'm in support of this. I mean, I, 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 and I applaud everything that Olivia's done and, uh, I wouldn't see why, uh, the Councilman McQueen's point that we would consider any other person leading it because why would you take somebody with the energy and expertise, uh, and replace them? Have you said that? I, I heard that there are only 18, correct me if I'm wrong. There were 18 municipalities in New Jersey that are part of Main Street.
There are 21.
Okay, 21. So that is roughly 3% of the towns, of the incorporated towns in, in New Jersey. And there are roughly 19,500 incorporated municipalities in the United States. And you said you're up to around 2,500. So that's a little bit over 10%. So it's been going for 40 years. Why such, why such a low penetration? It sounds, you know, the benefits sound clear, the costs are not huge. Why isn't, you know, let me speak to your success. Why aren't there more towns that have been doing this?
Well, we actually think there are. They're just not official members. Because our program is sort of open sourced, uh, you know, people can learn about Main Street, learn about the four-point approach. Some have chosen, for example, I, um, I just did a, a whole evaluation of the state of Indiana. They have 138 communities in their program. Um, but about 80% of those don't have an executive director, don't, uh, and, and they're doing it just as volunteer-driven and that's fine. We want to encourage all of those communities to, you know, take advantage of the training that's available to them because they get invited to learn about Main Street, but they don't get those technical assistance visits. They don't get the more intensive assistance, but they're still considered members of Indiana Main Street. But they're not on our rolls. They're not members of our organization. So we know that there are a lot of communities that have access to our program. And there, frankly, there's quite a few that have access to our program and, and like someone else mentioned, after 10 years, they thought they were done. What we've seen in the last three to four years are all these communities coming back that they should not have dropped out and that's why we're up to about 2,500 again. The state of Iowa did a study on why programs went inactive is what they, they called it. And often it was not for a lack of funding. Uh, it was many times a change in city leadership where that funding was cut off and that ended the program. So then they had to take off for a few years and come back. But we're growing actually substantially, I think. We're probably, I haven't looked at the numbers lately, but we just started an urban main program. And so now we're going into New York City, we're going into Birmingham, we're going into San Diego. And I don't think we're actually counting all the urban districts because we have an urban main program. And I think they're called Urban Network versus the Main Street Program. But I think it's people coming and going.
Thank you.
I think Olivia, was New Jersey not really participating for a few years? Or they didn't have funding or something?
Yeah, you're right. And I'll address that. Sean Thompson.
Uh, Sean, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm actually the executive direct, director of the Office of Local Planning Services. That's a Department of Community Affairs that, uh, is the state coordinator for the, uh, Main Street Program. So, so basically, a- as Kathy just laid it out, it's, it's leadership. And in this case, it's, it's whomever is in the, uh, the governor's chair and it's what they want their administration's agenda to be. So there's been a, a, a lapse of support, I guess that's the best way to actually say it, for, uh, participation in the National Main Street Program. And that's why there has been such a, uh, a, a gap, uh, from the last time a, uh, community was designated. I believe the last time one was designated was back in 2015. So with this administration, there's a renewed, uh, interest and support. Uh, this is the first time Main Street has actually, uh, granted, well, ha- has, uh, the ability to grant money, uh, to, uh, the Main Street, uh, designated communities. And I'm hoping, a- and I know we're all looking forward to the governor's, uh, budget address tomorrow. I'm hoping there's going to be a mention in the budget address for continued, uh, support in terms of funding. Uh, one of the things I also want to mention is that, uh, if you were designated, you would have been eligible to receive COVID money. I believe I was able to give out, and, and I'm happy about this, over $3 million to help with the recovery efforts. So, um, yeah, it's a lot of great things. And a, another thing I want to point out is it makes you eligible or it gives you eligibility for other state programs. I don't know whether you think, you've thought about, uh, you know, becoming a transit village, but
We have.
Guess what? This is going to give you points.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
We just started a transit village.
Mm-hmm, certainly opens some doors and that's, that's the goal. And, and should we not receive designation this round? The goal is to continue to operate on Main Street's four-point approach. We are members of the national program. Um, you know, the, the focus is really to continue on as if we were designated. We just don't have those services available to us. And next time the rounds open again, which Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, would be at minimum probably two years from now, next time applications open up? Would that be correct?
Well, hopefully less than that.
But yes, two years.
Two years is, I think, the general from, from what I heard previously. So, you know, the, the goal is to achieve designation this, this round. If for whatever reason we are, it is a competitive, uh, application process. So, you know, if we do not receive designation for any reason, then, you know, we, we have our, our site, our site set on the next, uh, application round with some goals in mind and how to achieve that.
Great. Okay, well, thank you both, uh, Kat, and all three of you, Sean, Kathy and Olivia, for, uh, doing such a great job, making this very clear. And we will make sure, Anthony, that we have a resolution on the agenda for the next meeting in March.
Fabulous.
Thanks everybody. Good luck.
Thank you all. Thanks. Uh, next on the agenda is approval of minutes, January 25th and February 8th. Do I have a motion?
Sorry, mayor, I just have one quick question.
Okay.
Olivia had mentioned the work plan draft. Um, do we have a copy of that or can we get it? Or maybe Olivia, it's better for you to just present it.
It's in the packet.
It was there? Okay.
Yeah, Anthony just put it in today.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, yeah, so I don't know, do, yeah, maybe we could talk about it another time. But I'm just thinking about Olivia presenting that, the work plan to us, um, to talk us through it, unless it's straightforward. I don't know. I didn't see it yet. I didn't know it was there.
I will just briefly mention it is, it is fairly straightforward. It's very, very brief. It's a high-level, just bullet points essentially of some of the projects that we would be considering based on research from other towns and what they've done and what is slightly aggressive and not too aggressive for the first one to three years, up to five years of the program. Um, so it's, you know, go through the bullet points and, you know, obviously I'm, I'm happy to present again if need be or to, you know, discuss anything further offline if that is also, uh, an option. But, you know, it's, it's pretty basic right now and then we would expand on it a little bit more with the application.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on, it's page seven and eight, I think, of the, um, the packet that just got uploaded.
Okay.
Anthony just inserted it, so we do have that.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right. Okay, do I have a motion for the minutes?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I didn't, I think I heard everybody, so there's no opposed. Okay. Um, next on our agenda is an open session for items not on the agenda. If anyone from the public would like to make a comment, um, please make sure you give your name and address. And you can either use the, uh, raise hand in the participant menu there or, um, go like this if you can't find it. If someone would like to make a statement, um, if you have a written statement that you want to read, please make sure you give it to, um, Anthony. So let me see, do I see anybody's hand up? Um, I don't see anybody raising their hand. Anybody?
I wasn't able to raise my hand earlier. Is there, is it working?
Um.
I just tried.
Gina did.
It's good. I just did it. It's good.
Yeah.
I think it, it depends on your own screen sometimes. Or, you know, do a thumbs up in your picture if you can't do that. But I do see, like, oh, Chad just did it.
We're, we're playing.
We're playing. Okay, so it's working. All right. Um, seeing, seeing none, I will close the public session.
Oh, I can't make my thumbs up go away. I shouldn't have started playing.
Uh, and we will move on to, uh, ordinances. So I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2021-1872 and ordinance amending stormwater regulations and supplementing and amending section 29 of chapter 12 in the Borough Land Use Code. Um, would anyone from the public wish to, I think before we do that, I think Chad, you wanted to give us an update on this from the planning?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a quick update. I know we had a discussion about this at the last, uh, meeting. Um, the planning board, as you guys saw in your packet, uh, they did review it. They did find it that it was not inconsistent with the master plan. However, they did express some concerns about the language in the minor section, um, as we discussed at the meeting at, uh, the, our prior meeting. So we've already put this, um, ordinance on our agenda for our next meeting. Uh, but the planning board did recommend passing it as is to meet the requirements at state level. And then we'll take this back up as a planning board and reintroduce likely and possibly some new language for the minor restrictions that we'll consider at all at time.
Okay, um, and actually I think, Tom, you had, um, a comment about, um, there is actually in there a, um, a fee for people who don't file their reports, which we have not enforced, and, um, Tom had a good suggestion about that.
Yeah, so I, I had reached out, uh, to the mayor to discuss the, uh, summons portion of the ordinance and that, uh, fair council was, uh, on board, uh, that we would, before we went down that road, we would do everything we could to, uh, provide public information sessions and, uh, invite those 50, uh, homeowners to, uh, information sessions and really try to get them to comply voluntarily before we go down that road uh, of issuing any sort of summonses. So I just wanted to confirm with everyone that that was the intent.
Yeah, and I think you talked about doing, um, public outreach and maybe some, uh, assistance in how you do that and just really, um, doing a good outreach.
Yeah, education.
Yeah. Okay, everybody good with that?
Good with that. Just had a question for, for Councilman McQueen, just to go back to the planning board. So let me, make sure I understand this. So the planning board is recommending that we pass, a- as we see it here now in our packet, uh, but that they're going to meet on it further and then are going to, may or may not come back with a request for revisions, which would be a new ordinance, a revised ordinance. But if that doesn't pass, would the, the planning board's okay with it exist as is? Is that correct?
Um, I think they would. So the planning board has deemed it to be not inconsistent with the master plan. However, they see some problems with the enforceability, uh, as well as some of the requirements in a couple sections and there are also some general inconsistencies, um, that, that results in things like this. The definition of minor versus major development, they want to address.
Well, should, should we not address those before we pass it? And just to revise, those don't sound like insignificant things.
Well, the issue is right up against the timeline of the state and the major development, making that consistent. So this ordinance itself aligns the major development with the state requirements, which we have a timeline for. Um, and they would like a general view of the ordinance as a whole, um, which hasn't, I can believe the last time this ordinance was completely, we, we done was 2009.
Okay, um, so I will open the public session. Anyone from the public would like to be heard on this ordinance? I don't know, not seeing any hands. Oh, I see Johanna. Okay, go ahead.
It says, it says something different. It says invite, but it doesn't, uh, it's not the usual participation. Okay, so I, I just want to underscore, um, the environmental commission's view and I'm not going to go over again all the reasons why. I understand that the New Jersey DEP is so concerned about stormwater. It seems to be a universal thing. It's all through our country and, and a lot more of it's going to, I think, continue to come up, uh, with the governor's concern about climate, uh, et cetera. But, um, I just want to tell you what I see. Um, when I go to a board of adjustment meetings, I see this is in relationship to the drywells and why I think I'm, um, feel as if we need definitely, and I was glad to hear about the education part, uh, from Mr., uh, Chenixky. Um, so, uh, um, and I will have the environmental commission do whatever you tell us to do and when it's finally decided, uh, to promote education because certainly I am finding out that people don't even know if they have a drywell. Um, I'm hearing all kinds of things that they don't know how to take care of it in spite of the fact that I think our engineer in our zoning officer, Mr. Price and Mr. Brightley did a good job of, of doing that two-page, um, shortening it and addressing how to maintain it. So I'm concerned about, um, the maintenance of these stormwaters and I think we need a little bit of, um, push to have that done. So when I, I only see what comes before a planning board or before the board of adjustment and what I see is that a lot of applicants have drywells and that not all of them are complying, both the major and others. Um, and this is what I feel i- is not unreasonable to expect that the responsibility should be on the property owner. Uh, because what happens at, when they apply for an application for a variance is engineers are accurately, they find out how much precipitation is not being recharged or is not being absorbed and they are granted this privilege of having a drywell to take care of that. And the drywells are not functional. If they're not functional, they don't serve the purpose. I don't see who should be responsible for that but the homeowner, so, and I think they should be accountable for it. So I'm hoping that, um, this administration will definitely, um, push for compliance, complete compliance, so that we have more people who are doing that annual report and more people who are, uh, inspecting or hiring someone to inspect. And I think we should do whatever we can, uh, to make that whole process as reasonably doable as possible.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, and I think that's what the planning board is going to really be taking a good look at. Um, okay, anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? Um, not seeing anyone else, so I will close the public hearing. Um, I guess this is public works, yes, so, um, Gina, would you like to move this?
Yeah, this is the 1872, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I moved to pass ordinance 2021-1872 on final reading and it has established.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mrs. Mara? She's muted, but.
I think she's frozen.
She's frozen.
Okay.
What happened? We lost Christine. Oh, wait a minute.
How's that?
There you go.
Good.
Yes.
I'm having technical difficulties, but I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2021-1873, uh, calendar year 2021 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank as of NJSA 40A:4-45.14. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Tom, would you like to move that?
I move to pass ordinance 2021-1873 on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Amara?
Yeah.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2021-1874, a bond ordinance providing for the improvement of various roads in and by the borough of Burnsville and the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating $1,511,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $915,000 bonds or notes of the borough for financing such appropriation. And this is the remainder of the referendum that the voters had passed of the $10 million for road improvements. So this will be the end of that referendum funding. And it will be for Crestview, Chestnut, Ravine Lake, Wynwood, Washington, White Knack, and Prospect. Would anyone in the public like to be heard on this ordinance? I am not seeing anyone, so I will close the public hearing. Gina, would you like to move that?
I move to pass ordinance 2021-1874 on final reading and adopt as published.
Roll call, please.
Do we got a second?
Sorry.
I'll second. All right, I'll second.
Now, roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amara told me she was recusing herself from this and the next ordinance, so she's procused.
Okay. All right, Tom, would you like to introduce the next one?
Yes, and I just, Mayor, I just wanted to mention one thing about the ordinance that we just voted on.
Yes.
That included the borrowing that was related to the referendum, but it also included 550,000 grant funding that we received.
Right, from the block grant. Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
And Tom, I filled with a couple of questions about this next ordinance today, so if you want to explain it to the public and why we're doing this, I think that would be useful.
Sure. So do I introduce it first, or are we going to talk about it first?
Why don't you introduce it, and we'll just get it on the table.
I move it ordinance 2021-1875, bond ordinance appropriating $2.55 million, and authorizing the issuance of $2.183,800 2,183,800 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Burnsville and the county of Somerset, New Jersey, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. The public hearing will be scheduled for a meeting at 7:00 PM Monday, March 8, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead.
The purpose of this is that we can get very favorable long-term financing right now. So the majority of the funding that we're talking about here would be refinancing existing short-term debt with a long-term debt at a preferable lower interest rate. There is a little bit of borrowing related to 2021 budget that we're still developing, but the vast majority of the borrowing is related to funding that's already like annually renewed short-term debt. So it's just converting some of the short-term debt to long-term debt at a preferable rate. Something else.
How does this play out for our debt reduction strategy, then?
So our overall debt plan envisioned actually slightly higher debt service, because we looked at this at a higher interest rate. We were assuming a higher interest rate than what we believe we can get when we go to the market. We won't know for sure, but we're estimating that we might pay as low as 1% interest rate compared to the 2.5% interest that we had planned for the majority of this debt. So it's all been included in the, in the long-term planning that we put together previously, including the borrowing related to this year. But it actually would have a slightly lower debt service related to refinancing the other debt, because we had assumed 2.2, 2.0, or 2.5% on that other debt.
The bottom line is it's a net win for the borough.
Yeah, so we're doing it to save money, with the exception that there is some bar related to some of the road projects that we're envisioning for 2021. And because those roads themselves last 10, 20, or 30 years, then aligning the funding for those, we felt was a responsive thing to do, and paying for those roads over their lifetime.
And this ordinance includes Bernard's Ave, is doing redoing Bernard's Ave. It's a fire department utility vehicle, I think a fire truck, front-end loader, and the dam improvements. Yes, are those all?
Yes, those are included. And I think the the dam improvements we need to talk about, I think that there may be an alternative way of funding it. But this will be putting in, I think there was $300,000 for the near-term Phase 1 and 2, which was presented to us by Doug Locker last year. Financing for those near-term phases. But longer term, the entire ticket, I think there may be other ways of financing that that we are looking at and considering, so that bring that back to council when we develop those ideas on finance.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have a second, I think? I don't think we got a second.
Chad.
Chad, I'm sorry.
I'll second once again. I'll second for a second time.
Any opposed? Abstentions? I think Christine abstained. Okay. All right, so that'll be on the next agenda for a public hearing. Resolutions? Anything that we want to take off or discuss separately? One, I want to just pull off the the opposing ACS 1571, and just something I wanted to add to it, so.
Okay.
Mary, we also have to insert the name for 2156. The name of the vendor.
Right. Yes. And that, I believe, is coming as a recommendation from the Finance Committee for the risk manager.
It was reviewed at the Finance Committee, Mayor, and there is I was charged with doing some research, and if it's counsel's pleasure, then we can go ahead and move, move on the appointment of Brown and Brown.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and you checked all the references and spoke to everybody, didn't you?
I did.
So would someone like to move 2149 through 2156 without 55?
I'll move 21, did you say 45, Mayor?
49.
49 through 2156 without 2155.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Okay, on 2155, I just wanted to comment, we had another legislative update on this proposed legislation, and one of the things they suggested we add to our resolutions or letters is the fact that we do not have there's no mayor, they're not talking to mayors in terms of committee meetings, and, you know, that there should be some input from mayors who have to deal with this law. So I don't know if, John, Jack, you can kind of warp that in there, just that mayors should be included in the hearings or discussions on that. Can we say?
We can add that language, and I'll send a revised resolution to Anthony.
That would be great, just, yeah, they just suggested we include that as well. So can we approve it with that correction?
Yes.
Okay. Someone like to move it?
I'll move resolution 21-55, recommended amendments.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Amara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
All right, Mayor's Report. On February 10th, I was interviewed by Amy.
Tom O'Day has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, looking at my screen, not at my participants. Where's Tom?
Sorry, sorry to interrupt, Mayor. Back when we were doing the resolutions, I just wanted to mention thank you for Lauren Sugarman and
I knew you would do that, yes.
Who have volunteered to be members of our fire company, and thank them for the volunteerism and support for our town.
I was going to ask you to do that, because you do it every time, and I forgot. Thank you for doing that. Okay, so I was interviewed by Amy Harris of Epiphany Community Services. She is conducting community assessment for community in crisis, so they're reaching out to different people in the community to redo an assessment of drug use and mental illness in town. So hopefully, we'll see results of that. February 10th, and I think Jeff, you were there for the Somerset County Governing Officials Association. The guest speaker was Anthony Kava, who is the president and CEO of Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, Somerset. He talked about the second wave in the hospital and how their treatments, the whole treatment modality is much better, so they're seeing shorter stays and people not needing as much care. I don't know, if you want to add anything to that, Jeff?
No, it was, it was an interesting report, and way too lazy to go into here now, but I think you're right. He talked about the shifting dynamics of who gets hospitalized and what they're doing, and some of the new treatments on the horizon.
Yeah, which is good news. We also had the Steering Committee meeting for the Recreation Master Plan to get an update from Pat Hoagland. I think we're supposed to have another meeting again soon, so we should be bringing some information to the council on that very shortly. And I think we had, what did he say, Tom, another three months to get it finished? Did he say, like, April?
Time frame. I think, well, exactly.
Yeah, I think it was another couple of months, and it should be, we should have that wrapped up.
Their recommendations are going to come along with an implementation plan, I think, was it, or some suggestions for implementations?
Yeah. On the 12th, I attended the Somerset County Stigma Free Committee meeting. We talked about ways to promote the efforts of the committee, and to get more municipalities to sign on to the resolution, and get programs to sponsor for Mental Health Month in May. And as part of what we've been doing, the Police Department was doing the, and I forget what they call it, working with Metheny as part of Stigma Free in putting together, I think they're making bags that the patients give out, so they have been working a program for part of that as well. The, this Assembly Bill 1571, there is a mayor sign-on form that downtown New Jersey has been trying to get as many mayors to sign. I have signed it. We're doing a, Mayor's for Main Street is putting a press release out. They're getting as many different groups to sign on as we can to try and stop it in the assembly, because the fear is that if it gets to the Senate, then Senator Sweeney will get it through, so. Hopefully, we can stop it in the assembly.
What's, what's the projection for that? I mean, how, how successful do they think they, they might be?
They actually have slowed the process. It was moving very quickly, and now it has seriously slowed. So I think a lot of the letters that people have been writing and the resolutions that, you know, a lot of towns are doing, like we are, hopefully will slow it down and maybe help it die out in the Senate. So if you haven't yet reached out to our Assembly people or our senator, please do so, even if it's just a quick email to say, you know, we're right in the middle of a downtown redevelopment project, and we could, you know, two years of work could go down the drain. And I know a lot of towns are sending in their, their stories of what they're, how it's going to affect their town. The Cultural Arts Committee, we are going to be sponsoring a trivia night on March 9th, so there will be details coming out on that. We also talked about creating a visitor's guide along with recreation that would have information about the town, the history, where our trails are, the different organizations, so we're going to try enlisting different groups to put that together. We also talked about, you know, how the Shoretowns have those maps, those out-of-proportion maps of trying to get one of those done as well. We had a mural painting session this past Saturday, the, there's one more this upcoming Saturday, and then the next ones will be in April, but it's really a lot has gotten done. It's amazing how much has gotten completed. So we're on schedule for the mural. The county call now on Thursdays has switched to Zoom. So Anthony, I didn't see you on this one. You were recording it, but I didn't see you. Were you there?
I was there. I just didn't have the video, but I was, it's a little bit late, but yeah, I was there, I'm recording.
Yeah, I guess people, you know, didn't, some people didn't know about the switch, and they were on the phone.
I didn't, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why they went to Zoom, but they did. I'm trying to think if they said anything. Oh, what they did say is Somerset County is eighth in the state, the eighth county with the number of vaccines administered. They have given 15.59% first doses and 6.6, no, that can't be right, I think I typed that wrong. Oh, yeah, 6.62% second doses. They did have a slowdown because of the snow, the delivery of vaccine was slowed down. The 18th, I attended a webinar by Congressman Menendez and Booker on the COVID Relief Bill that they're working on, I think, this week, which would give direct assistance to restaurants and direct funding to municipalities. If you remember the last CARES Act, we didn't, the money didn't come directly to municipalities or even counties if they were under a certain population. This would go directly to municipalities, and in correspondence, there's a letter from the congressman, and it shows how much each town would get under this new proposed bill. And I think that's it for me. So next is our Administrator's Report. Unless anybody had questions. All right, take it away, Tom.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So our, I guess our most pressing personnel matter at the moment is that we're looking to fill the position of Assistant Recreation Director, so that ad is out there now, and I know that because we've already received two or three resumes hit the street today, and so there's a lot of interest in that position, so that's great. You know, my office is right outside of where Public Works stages to remove snow, and so I get to watch them work like nonstop for the past three weeks. And it's so impressive what they've done, knock on wood, with minimal incidents. But also behind the scenes, the mechanics working on all the equipment, and even, you know, John and his team working to make sure that snow is, salt is delivered on time as we deal with these storms, one after another, so hats off to those folks in Public Works doing a great job. We are ready to move forward with the diversity training for our staff on the mandatory side, and that's a little further down on the agenda. And we did receive two, three, sorry, two submissions for the RFP and on redevelopment, so we are starting to work with our profession. So we are starting to work with our professionals and evaluating that, making sure those folks met the minimum qualifications. And then we'll take it from there. And we're continuing to work on the evaluation of the dam and what are some, what are the best options out there for us? And we're working on a recommendation for the governing body. And I'll save my comments so I don't steal everything from the committee reports.
Okay, thank you. Public safety. John?
Yes, we did have a meeting and Jeff Hammond was kind enough to follow on Gina's suggestion. And it goes, it's a handoff sort of, you know, itinerary, speeding, police accreditation and the alarm ordinance, special event permits, you know, crosswalks, street lighting, sidewalks and, you know, budgetary implications of the public safety. And we have an alarm ordinance meeting set for tomorrow at five, I believe. Something the chief wanted to revisit on a standalone basis. Yeah, so, yeah, we're engaged. Anything that comes up, please forward it to us, we're happy to consider it.
Okay, thank you. Finance, Tom?
So the finance committee's been meeting weekly since the new year. We've made good progress. I think we're close to being able to issue a draft budget. I'm going to ask at our Wednesday meeting this week that the staff begin to plan for sharing the preliminary information with the other council members who aren't on the finance committee, so they can get a preview of the work that's been done and be prepared when the, when the first draft is introduced. And I believe that's going to be introduced, Tom, at the end of March or?
Yes.
Yeah, so at the end of March, we'll be ready to introduce the draft. And then I think we have one month and then we have to approve the budget. You know, we worked very hard at looking at all the different options that we have for funding for this year. We looked at the results of what happened in 2020, which is kind of an odd year with COVID. And we put together what we think is a pretty good plan. But of course, you know, it requires everybody to have their own opinion and then look at it. So I'd invite comments, concerns and questions from the council members that aren't on the finance committee once we're able to have staff meet with you individually and share information.
Thank you. And thank you for the amount of time you put in on this.
Yeah, well, we felt like our weekly meeting kind of kept the progress rolling and with the new administrator coming on board as well. We wanted to make sure we didn't drop the ball.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully we'll all get there together.
Personnel.
Yeah, happily I can say that our, our business administrators hit the crowd running. This has been great. We had a meeting on February, February 16 was the last one we had. At that time, we did discuss open positions and he's already alluded to the Assistant Recreation Director. We also have an upcoming or looming retirement of a mechanic that we have to replace. We talked about, that led us into a discussion of our table organization and how we can relook at cross coverage or the skill sets of all our employees to see how they can augment each other. There'll be a report a little bit later about the diversity and inclusion efforts. Our goal there is to strengthen our organization, which then would pay off in terms of strengthening the community. I'll let, let Tom talk about that specifically. And then we talked about looking at developing core values for the personnel so that that would assist the business administrator in developing key performance indicators for performance based evaluations for personnel.
Great, thank you. Public Works, Gina?
Yes, we also met and we just pulled my answer. We talked about the Polo Grounds walking path. They did have the pre-application meeting with the DEP and they're, they have a request for a retaining wall. And so we're kind of in negotiations with them. Sorry, I heard echo. Anybody else hear it?
Yeah, it's been here for a while.
I can hear it.
Okay, yeah, I guess it's more annoying when you're talking.
Where's the retaining wall, Gina? I'm sorry, I missed that.
They're looking to, they were looking for us to put in a retaining wall around the wetlands area so that when we're building up the walking path, that it doesn't go into the wetlands area. So we're, we went back to them with a little bit, they wanted an eight foot retaining wall. We were asking for a four foot retaining wall instead. With some fencing on it, but yeah, the, the engineers were going to come back with some, with some pricing based on, based on the, let me see if there were any numbers in here. No, not yet. Yeah, so, but yeah, an eight foot retaining wall would be quite expensive. So yeah, we're trying to get the four foot with a fence on the top, which also wouldn't be so slightly, I guess, but less expensive than an eight foot retaining wall. So yeah, so we're in negotiations, but that was the only thing that was, that was requested from this pre-application meeting. So went, went well, I guess, in that regard. We talked about the roads, which was just on for tonight's council meeting. And we also, there's a road survey underway. I think the last time they did the road survey was in 2017. So looking to just kind of rate them again, so we know which are the, which ones are in not such good shape. So that's updated, that should, I think that was delayed a little bit, but it should be done. I think they said by the end of March, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think the snow kind of slowed it down, didn't it? So they can't see the roads with.
Yeah, everything anyway. Yeah, we also covered the dam remediation, which is still ongoing, but we did get feedback today. I think I saw in my email that our request to extend to January of 22, and the end of January of 2022 was approved. So we do have to file the application though in June. And I think Doug said we were on track for that.
Tom, see, in regards to the dam remediation, I know this, this topic is bouncing back and forth between Public Works and the Finance Committee. I know that there's a public discussion to be had about its cost and about potential options for its funding. Is there a time when you wanted to put that on the calendar? Is, is the next meeting is beating after that? What is the timeline for that?
Well, Chad, let me just say first that I'm, I'm glad that we did the bond ordinance tonight because one of the things I want to keep my eyes open for is any sort of new stimulus funding that comes around where there's a potential for grants for shovel ready projects. And by having the engineering in place and having the bond in place, it puts us in a good position should those opportunities arise. And then, so, so as far as the dam is concerned, I, I think we're, we're making all the moves we need to make to be in a good position. Now, council also had a fairly in-depth discussion on whether or not we leave the dam in place or we remove the dam. And so we had set up at your direction a committee and with the people from the Raritan Headwaters and Johanna and her folks, Bob from Recreation, and we'll be meeting in the next few weeks to develop some options and then we'll see where that goes.
Sorry, Gina.
Okay.
All good, yeah. And then I just also wanted to say thanks to the, the PW team for, you know, all their work on the roads with this snow. I know it's crazy and they're rarely home for their families and then they've got to go home and shovel themselves out too after that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and they, they did get a lot of compliments on Facebook as well. A lot of residents were very positive about how quickly and what a good job they were doing. So pass that on to them because I know they must be exhausted by now. Land Use Committee, we had two meetings today and very positive meetings. One was, the first one was with the owner of the old Griffin and Howe building and 56 Degrees, who, you know, is, is looking to do some kind of a project that is in the redevelopment zone. So they'll have to follow all the zoning that's set up there, but it'll be great to finally have that building, something done with that building. It's been empty for a really long time. So we're hoping that they come through with a, a good plan. And then we also met with the people who are contracting with the Audi dealership. And very positive meeting, a lot of enthusiasm, I think some really great ideas moving forward. You know, there's still work to be done and some due diligence, but I think that would also be a great asset to the town if it all comes to fruition. So I don't know if John or Tom, you want to add anything, but I, you know, I thought they were very positive meetings.
Yeah, it was just exciting to see some such interest in Burnsville. You know, hopefully this is the beginning of a lot of interest and exciting times for us. Did you say, did you mention we have a tomorrow night meeting tomorrow, Mayor?
No, I think it's Thursday.
Thursday, okay, because you know, can you resend the invites? It got lost on my calendar, so. Well, also, you know, so, because I said, I recall you saying that, but I would have missed the date.
Yeah, I will, I'll email you again on that, I don't know where it went.
So Mayor, I didn't really have anything to add. I agree with what you both have said in terms of what information we've seen so far. I wonder how and when we share the information we've gotten so far with the rest of the council members. I'm sure they have an interest in, you know, sort of where we are as the processes. I know the process is still ongoing. We haven't, we haven't made any decisions obviously, but is there a way to update people? When, when is the appropriate time to do that?
Well, I think the next thing we need to do is it needs to go to the redevelopment committee. But I think first is particularly with, you know, where I think we're a long way off on the Griffin and Howe. They've got a lot of work to do. Because this was just, you know, basic origin, you know, concepts. But with the Audi dealership, I think once they get their contract signed, it'll go to the redevelopment committee. And then they'll send a recommendation with the details to the council. And then at that point, I guess the council's responsibility is to designate the developer and approve the plan. Is that Jack shaking his head? Yes, I get that right? Okay.
So Mayor Gina, did I hear you correctly that the contract may be imminent?
Yes.
That's fantastic news. That's step one.
And you know, from what we hear, it was not an easy contract to negotiate. So, but they are determined and really, you know, really have good plans for this building, so they.
I'd like to offer congratulations to the party that's, obviously, the party that's buying that, that location.
And they're, you know, they're all local people who live here and want to, you know, make the town good for everyone. So I think that's a really, that it's a real positive.
Fantastic.
Do we want to, Mayor, have some sort of public, I don't know, I mean, I know the public's invited to this meeting every, every week, you know, every time we have it. Some specific outreach, I just, it's a topic that piques more interest than our average topics, you know?
Yeah, I think when we have some solid drawings that we can share of what it would look like, rather than just kind of talking in generalities, I think when.
When it, when it comes to council, if council's going to be voting on something, obviously.
Yeah.
We wanted to have some sort of public involvement or opinions or something before we voted, right?
Yes.
The thing that I question, and like I'm asking this a little ignorantly here, is, I mean, this is a private transaction between the two parties. How much of it is actually confidential, private information versus publicly available? And I'm unclear where those lines fall. So Jack, some education would be helpful.
Yeah, whatever they disclose to the mayor, and don't ask that it be confidential, the mayor's free to speak about. We don't have a copy of the contract. That would not be a public record.
I, I was more thinking about, you know, our role is to designate a developer, right? So if we choose this developer, you know, I just want to be able to explain to the public why we chose this developer versus somebody else.
Well, yeah, for Audi, we only had one application unfortunately, but.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. For Audi, I thought we only had one, yeah.
Yeah, it is a good one.
But on the other hand, Mayor, I mean, we don't have to approve this developer, even if they're the only one.
Right.
I think we did something developed on the Audi dealership, you know, there will be further conversations, I think, but you know.
Yeah, I think we'll have a number of conversations. I think it would be worth maybe, you know, really advertising of the public meeting when we're presenting the, you know, what their plans are. But first, you know, after they sign the contract, they've got a 30 day due diligence period to do environmental studies. And so within that 30 days, you know, it could fall apart. So, you know, we're not locked in yet. So I think once that part is done and it's a sure thing, we can share with the public.
Yeah, would the, would the, the developer do a presentation, a public presentation maybe? On their plans?
Yeah, we can certainly ask them. That'd probably be easier if they did it because they know it better than we do.
Plus, I mean, I think if they want to be designated redecoverer, then, you know, they should, they should come in and tell us why, you know?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. We should have do a presentation and advertise it to the public with, you know, once the plans are all drawn and the contract signed. Yeah, good idea. Okay. Who's next? Any other, we have our housing report. I think Jeff's here. Does anybody, and Renee, anybody have questions for them on the housing report? Jeff, you have anything you want to add or?
Good evening, no, no, I don't have anything to add. It's just a regular month in rental housing. We're still continuing with the, with the FaceTime inspections, which are moving along quite successfully. We had a few people that are a little late getting their rental registrations in. I suppose we could say it's the weather, but some of them are habitual at this. So a couple of summonses, as you see, were issued.
And I think I'll add to Jeff's, I think intentionally the committee is satisfied and happy with sort of the status of the way that things are going right now in the borough. So kudos to Jeff and his team to make sure he's staying, that they're staying on top, on top of things.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chad. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any council liaison reports? Anybody attend any of their?
The only additional one is the planning board and I think you've discussed the primary issue that we discussed that.
Jeff?
Let me, yeah, let me report on the Environmental Commission, which last, the last met on February 10th. There, there was, as you might expect, a vigorous discussion about the dam, which seems to be, being talked about at every committee. It's difficult to remove dams in, in New Jersey, we've learned. But there are, there are some dollars for, for dam removal from some environmental groups if we chose to go down that route. There was also a vigorous discussion about the stormwater ordinance. We already heard from the commission's chair, Johanna Wissinger. That, that is ongoing and she is attending both the planning board and the Board of Adjustment meetings to participate on behalf of the Environmental Commission. I do want to bring up that there is a mandatory training on a stormwater training by the DEP, which is required for members of the Board of Adjustment and not all have fulfilled that. So hopefully, Councilman McQueen, you can take that back or who, who does that? I guess.
So we don't have a position.
We don't have a, well, maybe Jack, you can take, Mr. Pigeon, you can relay that to the board. But, you know, there are, there are requirements and they haven't been fulfilled. The, there's another item that we spent a lot, a lot of time not only talking about, but a number of us have attended numerous webinars and Zoom calls. And that has to do with the growing movement for electronic vehicles, e-vehicles. And it, it's, it's pretty clear that that's where things are moving nationally. And I think once we are able to come back with some proposals, we'd like to bring to the council the idea that at the very least, we've considered charging stations within the borough, but perhaps even looking at long term, that we think about our own fleet and what could be converted to electronic vehicles. There was discussion about the. There was discussion about the ongoing green infrastructure plans. And, uh, those focused predominantly at this time on, uh, promoting rain gardens, uh, not just the ones that are being done throughout town on municipal properties, such as at the, uh, at the, um, library. But also to encourage, uh, private ownership to, uh, look at your own properties and see whether they might be amenable to rain gardens and what kind of training, uh, we could provide, uh, for people who want to do that, or what's that kind of assistance that we could provide. Uh, and, uh, lastly, I think that covered everything we talked about. Uh, it was, um, to announce again, to remind everybody that the E-Waste Day is going to be on April 24th. Did I leave anything else, Joanna?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, shade tree map, it always conflicts with my work. I don't know if Joanna, if anything came up that you wanted to, is to share?
Sure, sure. Uh, we had a moment of silence for Jerry Fisher. Jerry Fisher was an outstanding, uh, member of the shade tree for many years, and I had the pleasure of really working for him. I used to measure with him. I was a runner for information. I got the Kiwanis Club to help water. But he was, uh, really, uh, great on picking trees. People don't realize how many lawn trees. He was really responsible for it. It's a tremendous amount of work, finding the right nursery, the right specimens and whatever. So we did that. We, um, are, we're ongoing with making a list of, uh, tree service people so that we could get, uh, information out to, uh, these people so that they are aware of our ordinance. And that's so that, uh, we get the maximum compliance that we can possibly get. So we always send that out. We talked about, uh, outreach for education. I'm always interested in that so that, uh, we don't have people taking trees down when they shouldn't, for whatever, um, reason they do. Uh, we worked on the mission that you have required for all the committees to see what, what, and what our roles are. And so that kind of sharpened our idea of our, our goals. So we heard, uh, I won't tell you about all the, uh, individual reports, because we hear dear management and, uh, but they did talk, uh, Ann Peterson talked about the Friends of Green in Burnsville, and you probably saw information in the newspaper. But we've been talking about, and we were concerned about them being unsavable, that they needed money to continue what they're doing. So I think we're in a fairly good position now.
Thank you. Good information. Yeah, it was a good article on Friends for Green in Burnsville. So hopefully they'll, it'll inspire people to donate, because they do a lot of nice projects in town. And I love those hanging baskets and I'd hate to see them go away. Anybody else?
Um, I have, um, I can talk about the ad hoc train committee too, but I was just checking my email, because I didn't do that today before the meeting. Um, and just quickly, there's a, there's a road closure for Mika from the public works side of things, just finishing up. There's a, the Mika Road is going to be closed. It was supposed to be closed today, but because of the weather, they shifted it to Wednesday now. So it's that lower half, Hill Hill to 202. Okay. So then we also met as the ad hoc train committee, the quiet zone committee, I guess. We, we thought we had really great progress. And then I got, then I saw some emails today, um, that maybe said we didn't make such great progress. We have six crossings in, in town and two of them are on the private property in Meadowbrook Farm. So we can't do anything about those. They have to blow the horns at, at those private crossings. We thought that there were two other private crossings where they didn't have to blow the horns, but in fact, now I think that they do. So we're kind of just going back and forth with the, um, the DOT on those. So hopefully we can net this out in the next couple of weeks. So we thought we only had Mika Road and White Knack to tend with, if you will. And so we were asking, um, you know, trying to look from an insurance perspective, what would happen in any case. And so we've, I've asked Jack to, to look at that. And now with the new risk, um, company, we'll look into that and see, uh, what that risk rating is. And then also we were going to ask the engineers, um, about barriers and things that were going to be installed and get, try to get a rough estimate of costs. And it was going to be just on those two crossings for Mika and White Knack. And, and it still is in, in that case, but, um, but yeah, we were hoping that we were going to get four out of the six for the no horns. And now it looks like maybe just two out of the six. So. And, and there also might be some even worse news that potentially the roads would have to be widened in order to do that. So. We'll keep continuing to plug away, um, but really, um, great progress from some of the volunteers. And, you know, especially ones that were, um, ex-engineers, um, at New Jersey Transit, and they've really got some, some connections that, that are helping us, uh, move along. So. Thanks, everybody that's helping there.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I think just, you know, getting all the right information can answer all the questions. So that's great that they're doing all that research. Okay.
I'd like to talk about the library board of trustee meeting that was on February 16th. Um, everyone in your monthly reports packet and, uh, also in your email received a February update from the library director. And, um, what's interesting to see is how the library has managed to, in one year, since right now we're at about the one year mark of when the pandemic started, what types of changes and, um, you know, how they managed to service the needs of our community throughout the pandemic in different ways and how, um, even though not everything could be in person in the beginning, they still managed to transform into something that has really been an asset to our community. So. I just also want to say for the benefit of the public is that the library is open every day. So some people have been asking if the library is allowed to be open. Of course they have restrictions, but they've, there's, um, ways to reserve books and have a, you know, a pickup right at the front desk. So you're minimizing exposure to, if, for anyone that has concerns about that. They also have a lot of programming and it's geared to all ages, all, um, all residents in the area that are interested in, you know, keeping, I know this is a hot topic now, but keeping the kids who should be in school all day that are not, uh, keeping them occupied. So please look at the library's website for that, as well as their, uh, social media posts. Um, they also offer, which this is another thing for the parents that are concerned about their children not being in school as much and falling behind. Please check their website for, uh, tutor.com, which is something that they unveiled just for this time that will allow, um, kids, students access to tutoring, which I think is huge and very necessary right now. So please, um, tell everyone that you know that that's something that's available if they need help taking care of their kids' education.
Christine, that tutoring is free of charge?
Yeah.
Wow, that's great.
Right. So that's offered to the library and you just need to, um, check out their website. They're also sending out a, um, you've probably seen their old newsletter. So they're changing their newsletter a little bit. So look out for that. But some amazing programs and things that you wouldn't expect to come out of a library, like decorating snow and just, they're just pulling out all the stops that a library can do. So please check them out and tell people to do that. The other meeting I attended was the cultural arts meeting on February 17th and, um, you've heard about the mural, of course, but, uh, if you have any local businesses or, um, people in, in search of some marketing, they can purchase mural sponsorships. And if you need any information, you can email me or, uh, go to downtownburnsville.com for the information. But there are sponsorship packages that, uh, will give some really good PR to some local businesses, you know? Your accountant, whoever wants to get their name out there, uh, this is a great way to do it. We're also going to be having a trivia night. I think the official date hasn't been set, but it's virtual. So if you like trivia and are competitive, this may be something for you to do, uh, virtually one of these nights coming up. So keep your eyes out for that.
Thank you. I actually, I'd love the new library newsletter. It's really a big improvement. It's really nice. They did a good job on it. Um, and I forgot to mention, Jerry Fisher also was, was a wonderful library volunteer. He was on the board forever and was so instrumental in getting that library built. So our condolences to his family. You know, he was such an asset to our community. Where are we? So now we're up to items of business. So we need to have a public hearing on the Midland Community Development Block Grant Request. Where's Anthony?
Yes, um, that is a, a community development block grant application filed by, by Midland for a generator at one, I believe it's 181 or, or 191 of Thermont Road. And Breann from, from Midland is here tonight to explain that. So, uh, I guess we can turn it over to, uh, to her if she has anything.
Oh, Breann, okay, I see her. Yeah. She had unmuted.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, I was having some trouble unmuting. Um, I'm here from Midland. Um, we have a group home located at Claremont Road in Burnsville. And our organization is interested in applying for community development block grant funding through the county. And if we're successful in getting this grant, we would be installing a whole house generator in a group home for four adult females with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And this would allow our residents to stay and be able to shelter in place during emergencies, winter weather, and be able to have electricity in the home and not have to take everyone in a van and move them to another location in those situations.
And Breann, all you need from us is just an endorsement of, of the grant?
Yes. So in order to apply, they just need to know that the township is okay with us pursuing this grant opportunity. And if we are successful, that it was put out in a public forum for any questions or concerns to be voiced.
And one other question, does this provide any guarantee? Because obviously if this is a, I believe it's a generator, not knowing, and I think Mr. Price is here still, um, does this, I guess, affirm that there aren't any zoning issues that would, would have to be overcome by such a grant? Or is it both the normal zoning process?
But through application.
Yeah.
Yes, it goes through all those, that, all of that would happen, uh, secondary. It really is just giving us the okay to go ahead with getting the funding. And as far as a generator is concerned, I really believe it's just electrical and building permits that would have to happen from there. But that would all be if we were awarded the grant. And then it would be on us to get all of those, um, things done and follow the procedures.
Yeah, that's, that, that is correct, Chad. Today, we're probably running at about 15 generator permits a month.
Yeah, they've been very popular.
If I hear from my electrician, he'll have a 16 month warranty soon.
You can't get a generator anymore.
You can. It's six months.
I just have a question. This seems like a very worthy endeavor. I mean, something that was really needed. And I think it would be helpful for these women to be able to shelter in place. If you don't get the grant, what is your plan B to, to do this? If I could ask?
The Midland Foundation would most likely underwrite the project if it did come to that. This is just a unique grant opportunity where you can make facility and public improvements to the group home. So we do like to take advantage of this opportunity to be able to take our foundation grant monies to be used for other programs, because there's so many needs and so, you know, so many programs that this kind of will cover us on that base. But I do know we would have board support and support from our CEO and CFO to fund this if we are not successful. But we are pretty optimistic, cautiously optimistic that we will be successful.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So you just need me to sign that, uh, form.
The public hearing, Mayor.
Okay. So I will open the public hearing if anyone would like to speak about this application from Midland. Anyone from the public want to be heard? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So do we need to vote on it?
No, because really you're not even endorsing it. Really, we just had to hold the public hearing.
Okay.
Certified to, uh, the county that in fact the public hearing was held and proper notice was given.
So I just need to send, sign that form and we're good to go. All right. Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. So we did that piece. Now we need the diversity and inclusion training. Is that Tom or Jeff? Who's doing that?
Actually, by resolution, it was the business administrator's plan. So this would be Tom.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we reviewed the recommendation by, uh, Ms. Barry Quick, uh, to counsel, and we put together a plan that we think, uh, that, that does address it. We, a, a, and the, the cost of, uh, doing the training is not, uh, extensive. It won't exceed more than $2,000 a year. I would imagine, uh, it'd be closer to 15. We're going to provide, well, we recommend providing, um, all the people she identified as mandatory with what we term level one training, which is the first year would include, uh, are we really that different, you and I? And how was your day? Getting real about bias, inclusion, harassment and bullying. And then in a subsequent year, the mandatory people would do the, uh, second level of training, which is ouch, that stereotype hurts, and anyone can be an ally. We would then, uh, also, uh, train hat, we, we, we would have plenty of room for all the volunteers who would like to take the class as well, uh, if we do it in, uh, if we took all the, the pool of potential volunteers and said, well, half can do it one year and the other half the next year, that would keep us well below $2,000.
Okay. Um, do you have the list of, um, the mandatory people? Do we know who they are?
Yes. So those would be, uh, council, uh, every, every paid supervisor and manager in the municipality. The chairs and vice chairs of the planning board and, uh, board of adjustment.
And then we were talking about, how often do we repeat the training or add to the training? Was there?
Yeah. So for the mandatory group, year one would be the two courses. And then, uh, year two would be the subsequent two courses. And then we just put those on a cycle.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
We talked, in terms of the, uh, the council and, and appointment, the, the, uh, chairs and vice chairs, that, that would be the, whatever their term was. So if we get elected for three-year terms, you'd have to do it every third year.
True.
Okay. So every new term?
Yes.
We good with that?
Yep.
I'm good with it.
All right. So when do we start?
Uh, as soon as, uh, you know, I, I'm guessing the, I'm not sure what's needed to, uh, put this in place. Uh, Jack, is it a motion, uh, to endorse this approach?
Yeah, I think we should do a motion, because they've already adopted the resolution. I'll just need to prepare it.
So then Mayor, we'll start setting the invitations and reserving the, uh, class time and process the purchase order, uh, this week.
Okay. Great. All right. Um, cultural arts committee appointment, Amy Watts. I have to say, she had just put a, a resume in the skills bank. And so she came as a guest to the meeting this month. And she had a lot to contribute just as a guest. She's got a great public relations background. Is, you know, very connected with, um, the media. So I think she'll be a great asset. You know, fairly new in town, so, uh, looking to be involved. So, uh, I highly recommend. So I highly recommend her. So we need a motion?
She had an outstanding resume. So I'll move the, we move her to the, we accept your recommendation, mayor. She goes to the community arts, cultural arts committee.
Can we just do it all in favor? Do I need a roll call?
Give it all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Good. Okay. Great.
And is Amy here tonight?
She was earlier, but I don't see her now. Yeah. I know. Unfortunately, this stuff's always later in the meeting and people don't always stay on. But yeah, I saw her earlier. But I will, well, Anthony will send her, her official appointment, but I'll just email her. She's good. Community well testing. And this was a email or a letter we got from Christie, I think, McDonald's.
Mara Tippett from Raritan.
That's right. It was Mara. They want to, usually we give out the kits and then people can drop them off. But of course, since Borough Hall isn't open, they wanted to set up a table, I believe outside of Borough Hall. And then
April 29.
Yeah. And then
Isn't there a cost for these kits though? Or are they free?
It's a minimal cost to the person, like the person that wants their water, their well water tested. Or you can actually do any water tested if you want.
Sure.
I think they're like $60 or something.
It's significantly cheaper. It's about, if I, if memory serves me, I sat in on a, on a, a training session that they had last year about this. It's about half the cost if you went out to, to pay for it yourself. Oh, so they don't pay us? They just take the kit from us and then they have to pay when they send it in?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So do we, are we okay with that? Having, letting them have a table outside? Why am I not finding this?
As long as it doesn't smell.
I wonder if they could set up at the farmer market? No?
Be the end of April? Is that?
I think they're looking for it to be just Burnsville people at this point.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
There's no farmer's market at the end of April either. I, I think the farmer's market ends at the end of March. And then the summer one doesn't start till June. So that's kind of in between.
And maybe Johanna can answer to, speak to this, but I, I thought they were going to coordinate it with the E-Ways Day.
They do that too.
Yes, they were. Yeah. And they do both.
Yeah.
So everyone's okay with that? They can just set up?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Correspondence was just that letter from our congressman about the American Rescue Plan. So, and actually it looked like Burnsville would get something like 1.7 million?
Yes, I read that. 1.4. One called it 1.7 was the other.
Yeah. And I think they said to use the, the higher number. But the, and the thing with this, I think is it's the first package and everything had to be specifically for, you know, COVID expense. And I think this is, can be like a secondary effect of COVID, not a direct expense.
Believe it when I see it.
Yeah. But they haven't approved it yet. But anyway, that's the proposed legislation. Okay, we have now our second open public session. So if anyone from the public would like to be heard, have a three-minute time window to speak and just give your name and address. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak? I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I will close the public session. Any unfinished business?
Something that somebody said tonight, I think it was the, the downtown Burnsville thing, it reminded me of our strategic vision sessions. I was wondering where we are, what, what are we doing with those? I feel like we had something to do and then I don't know where it landed, but that presentation reminded me of it tonight. Maybe we
I think it sort of died with COVID.
And actually, I, I sent Tom all the, you know, the sheets that we had come up with, all the things. And it's kind of something that we will get back to. I gave Tom the information to go through and he and I were talking about priorities. So it will come back. We don't want to let that go because we did spend a lot of time putting those ideas together.
Yeah, we did. And when, when, I think she mentioned, or somebody, maybe it was Kathy, mentioned the vision. And I was like, oh yeah, we had
I, I feel like we got it to a point where we had some unsaid mutual understanding and we started carrying it through. And because of COVID, we stopped short of writing it all down.
Yeah.
Right. I think some of it's been implemented and some, you know, a lot of what we talked about is being implemented in that little
Yeah, but we
Drives and drabs as we can.
So we probably should formalize it into some kind of a goal statement. Yeah, we'll get back to that. Thank you. And I am still, we've been tossing dates back and forth with the Board of Ed to hopefully get a joint session with them in March. So
Oh, nice. I wouldn't have asked about that again.
Well, see, I offered.
Assume that was dying.
No, no.
There is one thing I want to mention because a lot of folks are asking about scheduling their COVID vaccines, people that are eligible. And mayor, you shared with me that Facebook page where you can find just good people that want to help you schedule your vaccines. And it's any type of posts like, you know, this place has openings and that place has openings and I just did this. And there was a phone number today for CVA, like you name it. There's just all sorts of info and it's just people telling people. And the one that really stands out is an organization called wgirls.org. So if you have seniors in your life or anyone who cannot schedule an appointment on their electronic device, and I've had phone calls from people like this, that they just don't know what to do at this point. And it's through no fault of their own. I don't want to point fingers, but it's a big debacle trying to get a vaccine. But if you reach out to this wgirls.org, they have miraculously used their technology skills to get appointments for people. So just, just something for everyone to know. And, you know, email me if you want specifics. But I think that's a great way to just share the, I'm picturing a bunch of, you know, young girls or whatever ages that are, you know, very good at using their phone and just scheduling for people. So I think that's great.
Yeah. And that's specifically for people who can't do it on their own.
Yes.
You know, they're, they're homebound or they don't know how to use a computer or a cell phone and they're very frustrated. And they will do it for them, which I think was really nice. And the, and the Facebook page was, I posted it on, I think the bubble because I know a lot of people are frustrated. And I, you know, anecdotally, I've heard a number of stories of people who are getting appointments who aren't even in the, the right group, you know, 55-year-olds with no underlying conditions and you're not healthy or anything.
I would be careful, however, of, of well-intentioned people who might be directing you to vaccinations that aren't, aren't, aren't real. There, there is a growing concern about counterfeit vaccinations in the country. And so, you know, if you're going to a reputable place, if you're going to Atlantic Health or Barnabas or something like that, if they get you appointments at a place like that, that's great. I just want to counsel people, if they, if they get you an appointment at a place that you've never heard of, be careful. There, there's another way to, if you're homebound or you, you're not computer savvy or don't have Wi-Fi, you can, the, the call center at the county will, will arrange for an appointment for you. And I know the county's working and as well as the county OEM on, on mobile units that would bring vaccinations to people who are homebound.
That is hard to believe, that people actually giving fake vaccinated, you know, it just shocks me that people do things like that.
There's the fake, fake testing and fake vaccinations. It's unfortunate. I shouldn't say fake, I should say counterfeit. But, you know, that, that, there's always a few bad people out there.
Right? Yeah. It's a shame. Okay. Thank you for that. Any other new business? Then I believe we're going to go into closed session. Do, are we coming back out of it? Do we need to come out for anything?
Not for mine. I can only decide in closed session.
All right. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I'll move to go. Property acquisition is going to be an added topic?
Yes.
For the record.
What's another topic?
Property acquisition.
So it's pending lindication, contract negotiations and property acquisition?
Yes, please.
Okay. And we will not be coming back out. Did I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So those of you that are here, thank you for hanging with us for so long. And we'll see you next time.